And officially start the meeting at I have seven oh, actually just moved to seven oh one. So I'm calling the meeting to order, the council meeting of Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020. So, hold on a minute here, let's get this thing. Okay, so this is the June 23rd, second meeting of the month, we held before finance. So the first order of business is we could stand, and you're just kind of looking, you're sitting, so I don't know if you want to do that, but if you can still see the flag then, it's right here, pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
For which it stands.
And.
Nation.
Stand.
One nation under God.
You've got the visible liberty being judged.
For.
Alright, I heard all of you there. So now if you want to go ahead, well, we're gonna have to do a roll call, so we'll go ahead and do proceed with that. Mr. Antel?
Present.
Mr. Bartko?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Thank you, Davis?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Fen?
Here.
Alright, and Mr. Poliak, as we said, is running a little late, so we'll just mark him absent for now, and we'll record the time when he comes in. Alright, next order of business on the approval of the agenda is a motion to adopt the agenda as presented to this council. I don't, should have forgotten this from Natalie last Friday, and then Betty sent out any updates today. So you should have all the latest items on the agenda. Does someone want to make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Janet, and I'll make a motion to adopt?
I'll second.
Okay, Janet made it, and Mr. Antel seconded. Alright, so, Mrs. Miller?
Yeah.
Yes? Mr. Antel?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Fen?
Yes.
Good, Mr. Bartko?
Yes.
Okay, and Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Alright, so we've approved the agenda for tonight's meeting. I am now looking on the panelists and the attendees. We have three attendees, so, um, oh, I'm seeing. Not sure how we would get them on, so when Don gets here, we will go back to open forum. It'll give everyone an opportunity, if they want to speak, they will get set up with Mr. Poliak to do so. The next order of business is we have no ordinances for tonight's meeting. And then we have resolution. The first one we have is a resolution that's carried forward from the previous meeting earlier this month. Resolution 2020 dash six dash 26, which is the second reading. And I will read the title. A resolution approving the tax incentive review council's recommendation to continue the tax abatement for Premier Our House LLC and Our House LLC and declaring an emergency. So in order to consider this, we need to suspend the three reading rule. I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Miller made a motion, and Mr. Antel made a second. Okay. So I will do the roll call, Mrs. Miller?
Yeah.
Mr. Antel?
Yes.
Mr. Bartko?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis? And Mr. Fen?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion to suspend the three reading rule has passed. I'll now ask for a motion to adopt Resolution 2020 dash six dash 26.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Antel, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Fen. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none. And I could have Mrs. Klingenberg, I suppose, take the role, but I just.
I think I'd be happy to. Mr. Antel?
Yes.
Mr. Fen?
Yes.
Mr. Bartko?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
And I think Mr. Poliak is arriving as we speak.
Oh, great.
He'll get his computer up and let you know when he's here.
Okay, well, do we want to wait, well, wait, this is passed, we have five passing, so it's, at this point, he was still absent, but we'll pick him up on the next, uh, next order of business here. So this becomes Resolution 2020 dash six dash 26. Okay. So, let's, let's just move on, the next one again is a, is a second reading, and it is the other tax incentive recommendation. So that is Resolution 2020 dash six dash 27. A resolution approving the tax incentive council's recommendation to continue the tax abatement for Hemingway at Boston Heights LLC and Paychecks North America Incorporated and declaring an emergency. Alright, so in order to consider this, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay. Alright, so motion made by Mr. Antel, second by Mrs. Miller, roll call. Mrs. Klingenberg, if you can. Do you hear us?
Betty's muted.
Oh, you're muted, Betty.
So, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Antel?
Yes.
Mr. Bartko?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yeah.
Mr. Fen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
And Mr. Poliak?
Yes.
And he's saying yes, while he's getting on.
Okay. So Mr. Poliak is officially in the council meeting at, I have seven ten.
It's not prompting to allow me to open right now.
We're trying to get him into the system here. Go ahead and talk, and I'm gonna turn my computer around for a minute.
Okay, oh, there's Mr.
There he is.
All right.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's, that's fine, Don, we're, we're good, we've got, uh, we've covered two resolutions so far, and they've both passed. Last one being Resolution 2020 dash six dash 27, that's six to zero, the last one's five to zero. Well, this one, the motion to suspend passed, so now we can see ahead. We skipped over the open forum, I see we have three attendees. I need to switch you to host. Hold on a minute here.
Yep, and we have no, um, there's no, nobody from the public is asking to, um, for questions yet.
Oh, no one's asking for questions? Okay, well, then we'll just continue on, and, uh, we'll see if any of that occurs, but, uh, we'll get through the next couple items of, uh, legislation here. Alright, so we're now in the middle of Resolution 2020 dash six dash 27. Need a motion to adopt that. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Now, Ron Antel?
Sure, either Heather.
Heather. I could, see, when you, when you speak, there's a little frame that goes around the picture there, so that's how I, I can kind of tell. Okay, Mr. Antel, seconded, am I correct? You agreeing with that? Okay. Is there any discussion on Resolution 2020 dash six dash 27? Seeing none? Mrs. Klingenberg, I see you're unmuted, so go ahead and take the roll call, please.
Sure, Mrs. Miller?
Yeah.
Mr. Antel?
Yes.
Mr. Poliak?
Yes.
Mr. Fen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartko?
Yes.
Okay. A resolution passed becomes Resolution 2020 dash six dash 27. The next resolution that we have is a, is Resolution 2020 dash six dash 28. A resolution retroactively authorizing and appointing Chad McArdle as police chief for the village of Boston Heights and declaring an emergency. This was effective, for those of you who may or may not remember, June 1st of this year, of this month, so. Alright, so first we needed a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Thank you, Ron. Second. Heather, second? Yes, okay, roll call.
Mr. Antel?
Yes.
Mr. Bartko?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yeah.
Mrs. Davis?
Yeah.
Mr. Fen?
Yes.
And Mr. Poliak?
Yes.
Okay, motion to suspend is carried. I'll ask for a motion to adopt Resolution 2020 dash six dash 28.
Let's still move.
Thank you. Alright, who was next here?
Janet.
Janet.
Janet, okay. Alright, so we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I did not get who's made the motion originally.
I did. Made the motion. You hear me now, Betty?
Yes.
I, I'm recording it also, so.
Okay, three people spoke, all I need to know is who did.
Mr. Fen made the motion, Mrs. Miller seconded.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, seeing no discussion, we will go ahead and do the roll call when you're ready.
Mr. Fen?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yeah.
Mr. Antel?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis? Mr. Poliak?
Yes.
And, and Mr. Bartko?
Yes.
Okay. Passes becomes Resolution 2020 dash six dash 28. Thank you. Next we have Resolution 2020 dash six dash 29. This is the first reading, the state resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement and/or contract addendum with Dicato, Pitchford, and Yoder regarding collections and declaring an emergency. And I can explain a little more as we get into motion to adopt. So first we need a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you, do we have a second?
No, second.
Okay, I try, I think it was Mr. Fen and Mr. Bartko would, will say, uh, I don't, I don't know.
B becomes before F, give it the back.
There was a Bartko, okay, alright, so, so we have a motion and a second, thank you, Bob. Thank you, Ron. Betty, go ahead and, and do the roll call.
Mr. Antel?
Yes.
Mr. Bartko?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Davis?
Yeah.
Mr. Fen?
Yes.
And Mr. Poliak?
Yes.
Okay, I would ask for a motion to adopt Resolution 2020 dash six dash 29.
I'll make a motion to adopt it.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have a second?
This is Janet.
Janet, second. Janet, second.
Yeah.
Okay.
With some discussion, please.
Alright, so what this is, is in our mayor's court, we sometimes end up having some cases that don't, um, pay the fines or pay the, you know, what's, what's owed. Sometimes it's involved with collection of damages to property that may have occurred during the incident. So we've had another company doing this for about four years. They're out of Columbus, but they only get the ones that we are, you know, our office tries to collect all those first. Betty and, uh, and when needed, Natalie helps her with it. They send out notices and, and bills and try and recoup that money. When they cannot be successful, or when they are not successful, I should say, then, um, we contact this other company to go ahead and collect it. That other company keeps a certain percentage of that. And they tack that onto the bill, and that's how they get paid. So, let's say the bill, let's say the fine was a hundred dollars. They would, maybe, they'd get thirty percent, so they'd get thirty, they would charge the person that they're fighting from a hundred and thirty dollars. And then they would let us know, we would get our, our fine money or, um, whatever, whatever the offense money was. And, uh, and so that would go. As it turns out, um, Dicato has suggested to us, our prosecutor, that we could do this, and being a little closer in town and having a little more direct, um, connection with the court. However, there is, what we had him do is he did check with, um, the Supreme Court, and Betty can verify this, that, um, Supreme Court has no conflict with Dicato, Pitchford, and Yoder doing this. So it was like a separate little department, I think, and Marshall would jump in if he wants to add anything to this, but, uh, that would, that would do these collections. So that's the only reason why, and I, I bring it through, and it's, the last one we went ahead and approved, it's really something that's in mayor's court, it doesn't, um, the money's, I'll say it here, it's all, whatever the solution is, and then Betty, when she balances her books, if it's paying off guard rail, she would send a check to Betty, who would in turn pay the guard rail company or whatever. So that's the way it goes, if it was a fine for mayor's court, it gets deposited into the mayor's court budget. Are there other questions on that?
Marshall, I have one question. I, I don't have the resolution in front of me, I just read it on my email, but could you explain section four of this? I didn't understand it.
I do not have, are you, are you guys still there? I'm trying, trying to pull it up here, uh, myself.
I can read it to you, Marshall, section four.
That'd be great.
Okay, it says that, "To the extent not already done so, the funds required for the payment of the obligations incurred are hereby appropriated for the purposes described."
So, with Betty, if I can, and I will answer that question, as a part of this, I, I want to back up and kind of give everybody a little, uh, further color and background on the, um, on this process and our proposal. Just so you know, this is a same, exact contract that our firm is offering and proposing is the same as the current firm, so there's going to be no change in any cost to the village whatsoever. And with it comes, we hope and, and believe, the added value of having a local council, someone who is more invested in the community and someone who practices here in our local courts and is well-known. I will tell you that our firm, as the mayor indicated, has a separate collections division in our office. We have multiple individuals who their sole job is designed and intended to pursue a debt such as this. We serve as outside collections council for the city of Cuyahoga Falls, for, um, for the village of Clinton, for the village of Mogadore, for Summit County, for, um, the, for Stark County, and even for the, the Ohio Department of Medicaid, the Ohio Department of Taxation. I mean, the, the list is, is quite long, um, and we, all of our, I should say, most of our clients are public sector clients. And so our staff is trained, and our attorneys are trained in the rules and regulations regarding collections. And I just want to say that I appreciate the opportunity to be considered for this, and we, and we think we're going to bring, um, like I said, a little bit of a, a value add that the Columbus firm just doesn't, uh, doesn't have, not by virtue of them not being good attorneys, but just by not having a local connection. Bob, to answer your question, uh, the way this works from an appropriation standpoint, every, every agreement that the, um, that the village enters into requires a statement with respect to appropriations. In this particular instance, this is more what I would describe as a belt and suspenders approach. As the fines are collected by our office, and this is, by the way, this is not all of the fines that are collected, this is only the fines that don't end up getting paid and that go out of, out of line, if you will, or become past due. And for those that get referred to our office, we would collect the fees directly, and then we would be subtracting, uh, our fees when that happens, uh, when we would collect the money, whatever the dollar is, even if it's a hundred dollar fine, but we only get fifty bucks, then we only take our percentage on the fifty bucks, not as if we had collected the a hundred percent. And then we turn the balance over to the village. So the short answer is, we don't really, um, have to have the appropriations designated, but we put that in more as a, out of abundance of caution.
Marshall, you won't run into a conflict of interest or anything, will you?
Nope, um, I researched this as well as Tom, independent of one another. And there are a number of different factors to consider in conflicts of interest. And the, if you consider the fact that the, the individual who is setting the fines and the fees here is the magistrate, not our office, and the, um, the fact that the, the individuals handling it at our office are separated from, from that function as well. And we have confirmed this with Tom calling the Ohio Supreme Court directly, asking them and presenting them the scenario, and them providing us confirmation that they do not believe it's a conflict. So the short answer is, no, it's not a conflict.
Marshall, how long have you been providing this service?
Our office has been doing this for over, um, ten years.
Oh, you're not newcomers, then?
No. Not to this of us.
I guess we weren't just aware of it, that's all.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
I didn't either, so.
Hey, Marshall, quick question, is a percentage that you charge a municipality the same for all municipalities, or do you negotiate those separately?
So our standard, um, rate is one-third, so with thirty-three and one-third percent. And so the thirty percent here is slightly lower than that. Uh, the rates are different depending on the client, depending on the volume. But, but this is a, um, this is still a discount from our standard rate.
Okay, thank you.
And, and we also do private collections, so we, we represent a, accounting firms, engineering firms, you know, hardware floor, um, companies, uh, so we, we represent both the private and public sector, but a large portion, certainly a majority of our work, is the public sector.
Just, just a little further to help you understand, counsel. Our clerk of courts, Katie Anovich, had discussed this with Tom Dicato, who's here, you know, for our court quite often, and she was mentioning the fact that the, the firm we're using now, they go out, and I think it's, it's like anything that any of us do. The easy cases, they go after because they're easy to get the money out of. Some of the more difficult ones, we're not as sure, maybe that money would never be able to be recovered, but, uh, we're willing to say, let's go with someone that we know and, and deal with a little more closely that will understand that our village needs this money coming in to support what we do. And, uh, so Katie's recommendation was to go ahead and look into this and, and go with, uh, a change. So that, that's the, the main reason that brought this about and brought it to my attention, because as I said, and as Marshall said here, he's been doing it ten years, but I wasn't really aware of that at that time, so. So on, do we have other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Janet.
Okay.
Hi, um, Marshall, my question for you is, um, and Katie had, like, the mayor had just said Katie had said this is easy cases and more difficult cases, uh, in, in, in the, in the event that you have, uh, that you run, it, you have some experience too, in the event that you run into, uh, more difficult, uh, collection cases, and, uh, as an example, it could be, you know, a family that is not able to make, you know, payments, are you negotiable with them on that? Or would that be more of a merchant for them?
That's a very, that's a very good question. And the contract that we have put together and the proposal that we have specifically indicates that the village will be designating what level of what I would refer to as settlement authority is given to our office. So you will give us parameters, let's say that, Marshall, you have eighty percent discretion, so, um, or, so you can negotiate the first twenty percent. And if there's somebody wants a discount beyond eighty percent, uh, then you can, uh, I have to come to the village to get permission, right? Or it can be, Marshall, you have discretion up to fifty percent. Uh, all of those things, all of those parameters are up to the village to tell us, and then we will follow your instructions. So the short answer is, you tell me how it is that you want us to manage these files, and we can do it. All of our clients have different parameters, some give us, you know, twenty percent approval, meaning we have the first twenty percent on the settlement authority, some give us fifty percent, and with some, I've gotten a hundred percent. So it's really up to, up to what you guys prefer.
And then how, okay, and how would that, how is that contract then reviewed and who, where are we, what committee does that? Or do you present us with a contractor?
So the, I present the, the mayor with the, the contract, right? Do you hear me?
Yeah.
I would, I would present the mayor with the contract, and the mayor, uh, you know, in the absence of a specific motion or, or a, a resolution put together by the council, the mayor would, um, direct our, our parameters on that.
Okay, that's, that's, I'll explain that specifically, and I'd also like to, I'd also like to say that I, um, what I like about this, um, proposal and having this company, the Dicato, Pitchford, Yoder working, um, under contract is that it is, it'll, it will be, it will be so much easier for the village to be able to track and have a, um, relationship with, with you, with that company, in terms of where we are in collection. And I, I think that that's a, a very positive. A very positive movement of change.
I, I appreciate that, and, and we believe the same. We believe that's the, the, the special value add that we bring to the table. And, I mean, that's why the, the local, um, our metro bus authority, I mean, there's just so many. And I don't mean to, to carry on about it, but there's the, our, we've been fortunate with Reed, Tom and I, to be able to put together a, um, a rather formidable list of, uh, public sector clients that we do collections for. It's, um, it's something we've been working on for many years, and we're very proud of it. And frankly, I'm, I'm very, very happy and proud that you are the village of Boston Heights, actually considering us for, for this. that, uh, you are the village of Boston Heights, um, actually considering us for, for this opportunity is. Uh, we appreciate you guys coming to us and, and giving us this chance.
Hey. Thank you very much.
Uh, that was all the, that was all the questions I had, so go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
As I asked, if there were any other questions? Um, we're getting a little static, not sure who that was. Um, but we could go ahead and move on now, if there were no other questions, we do have a motion made by Mr. Bartko and a second made by Mrs. Miller. So we could go ahead and take roll call, Mrs. Klingenberg.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Bartko?
Yeah.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Antel?
Yes.
Mr. Poliak?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
And Mr. Fen?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, becomes Resolution 2020 dash six dash twenty-nine. Okay, the last, uh, resolution we have this evening started out as a, uh, uh, a way for us to retrieve monies that are coming from the state and federal governments to Summit County that is to be passed on to the village. So as a result, we needed to create a coronavirus relief fund and approve that so we can accept that money. And that money can be used, as we see, for instance, uh, sanitizing, uh, equipment that we get for the police department, uh, maybe the road department, the divider screens that we use in a couple of the offices. It also can be used, um, for safety force, payroll, different things like that, so. We're just finding out, but the, the initial, the initial move we have to do, and this has to be passed within seven days, and they told me this today at the meeting, that by Monday of next week, uh, all these communities, cities, villages, and townships, either have this approved or they won't be able to, to partake in that money coming from the state and fed, so that's the reason for this resolution. We started out, um, as a ordinance, but it is, we made it a resolution because that's what the county's looking for. And, um, so we've already voted on it once as that ordinance. Now it's, it's, we're continuing on as a resolution. We did not pass it as the ordinance because we wanted to find out more information, and we did find that out. So, the CARES Act is what this is based on. And, um, House Bill four eighty-one did pass in Columbus, uh, just the other day. So, if there's anything I missed there, Marshall, um, please point that out, and I will go ahead and read this, um, header, otherwise.
Nope, go ahead and, uh, read the title.
Okay. The title is
Great.
"A Resolution Creating a Boston Heights Coronavirus Relief Fund, Authorizing and Directing the Mayor and the Fiscal Officer to Take All Necessary Actions to Comply With the Requirements of the CARES Act and House Bill four eighty-one in Expending Funds and Seeking Reimbursement and Declaring an Emergency." So we need a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Nice move.
Thank you, Ron. We have a second?
I'll second.
Bob Bartko seconds. Okay, roll call, Mrs. Klingenberg.
Ben?
Yes.
Mr. Bartko?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Poliak?
Yes.
And Mr. Antel?
Yes.
Okay. So that motion is carried, we will now move on to the motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller, do we have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Any discussion on this? Seeing none? Roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bartko?
Yes.
Mr. Fen?
Yes.
Mr. Poliak?
Yes.
And Mr. Antel?
Yes.
Alright. Motion is passed, becomes Resolution 2020 dash six dash thirty. Um, we will move on to old business, and under old business, I want to read a report from Brian Gorog, our village representative from, um, OHM Advisors. "This whole mayor below is a screenshot of the OPWC site. The good news is the appropriations bill passed. So PWC will continue paying bills for Boston Mills Phases Three and Four." You know, this, the state always has to pass these, these budget bills, so we can continue on, and you know, they committed to the thing, but they had to get that into the budget. Round thirty-four, which is the Brandywine Reconstruction Project, which was approved last year, is awaiting Ohio Senate approval. Once approved, we'll download our normal letters of acceptance, and we'll be able to begin design and hopefully bid in the winter of twenty twenty-one, and with construction in twenty twenty-one. What is currently, round thirty-five, which is what will be applied for this year, um, those applications are not yet available, everything is sort of pushed back and that, but the good news is that an ongoing project that we have, Boston Mills Road, and I don't know, maybe you've been down there in the last three, so, everything but the top coat is on, we're working on ditching, we put in a new pipe under the road, um, before it was paved, it's all coming out very nicely, so, um, we expect that to be done sometime in July. Uh, does anyone have any questions on that? Okay. That's all I have on that. Um, does anyone else have old business? No? How about new business? No? I, I know, no reason to have an executive session. So, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Nice move.
Okay, so Mr. Poliak was in there, and who else was there? Mr. Fen?
Yes, I was there.
Okay, so we'll make it one, two in that manner, Mr. Fen and Mr. Poliak seconded. And all those in favor, let's signify by seeing eye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. So we are officially adjourned at seven thirty-nine PM. Alright.